Five thirty, we will call this meeting to order.
Start with the roll call, Mayor Boren, Mayor Pro Tem Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Caffey.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Olivares.
Here.
Councilmember Starnes.
Here.
Councilmember Milton.
Here.
You would join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
An invocation tonight by Mr. Doug Williams.
Y'all would stand at this time, we call Memorial Day, we pray, dear Lord, we remember the fallen soldiers that have paid the ultimate price for our freedom. As we prepare for the upcoming Remembrance Day, we come to you and we ask for healing for families of lost loved ones, protection over our military and law enforcement members, and to help the rest of us to make sure that Memorial Day is more than once a year. Make it a continual act of gratitude in a spirit of peace, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. All right, we have a couple presentations, a couple proclamations, and then we will get into citizen communication. And I will let you know now that as we move down the agenda, we will probably jump the executive session to around six thirty to accommodate council members that have other prior arrangements so they can be a part of the executive session. So when you see that happen, and that's why it's happening. With that being said, we have the resignation letter from Mr. Boren that I will read. Do you? Dear Rockdale City Council, I am writing to inform you of my decision to resign from the position of Rockdale City Mayor effective May sixth, twenty twenty-four. It has been an honor to serve as your mayor and to represent our community in the past two years. My goodness. I would like to express my gratitude for the opportunities and experiences I've had while serving as your mayor. It has been a privilege to work alongside dedicated individuals committed to improving the quality of life in our city. Thank you for the understanding, and I wish the entire council and city continued success in the efforts to better serve our community. Mayor Brett Boren. So mark that as May sixth, this is official resignation. Do we have to have a motion of any sort to accept that?
Make a motion that we approve or accept the letter?
Got a motion and a second? All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Canvas votes for the general election held May fourth, twenty twenty-four. So for East Ward, Scott Starnes was unopposed, and on the West Ward, we had Jonathan Young and Bradley Caffey, with Jonathan Young a total of forty-nine votes and Bradley Caffey a total of two hundred and twenty-five votes, thirty-nine in precinct three eighteen, and ten for four nineteen for Mr. Young, and two oh two in three eighteen, and twenty-three in four nineteen for Mr. Caffey. So that said, Bradley Caffey is hereby declared to the duly elected council member West Ward, and the said Scott Starnes is hereby declared to the duly elected council member East Ward of the City of Rockdale, Texas, to fill their representative offices for three years ending in the month of May twenty twenty-seven. So congratulations, Mr. Starnes. Congratulations, Mr. Caffey. You now have something to do on Monday nights. Do we have to swear in, Barbara?
Yes, and they need to approve the resolutions, sir.
Did I skip the resolution?
No, sir, you read the bottom of it, but that we need a motion, we need a vote on it.
Okay.
Are you staying from it, voting?
No.
You may read that resolution, should I?
No, sir, you can, you can actually just take a vote on it.
All in favor of doing both same time?
Typically, it's motion, second, and all in favor. Did we do that?
Of both of them?
Yes, sir.
Same time? Need a motion to accept Bradley Caffey and Scott Starnes for appointed positions?
I motion that we accept Scott Starnes and Bradley Caffey for their elected positions.
I'll second that.
All in favor, motion carries six zero. Now you're official. All right.
And then Shannon will do the swearing in.
Shannon?
Yep.
I, Bradley Caffey. I will faithfully execute. My elected office. The best of my ability. Preserve, protect, defend. Constitution and laws. The United States. I, Scott Starnes. That I will faithfully execute. The duties of my elected office. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect, and defend. The Constitution and laws. Of the United States. Shannon, we sound, need to give these back to you tonight.
Congratulations again, fellows. All right, we have to elect one council member as Mayor Pro Tem. Anybody wants to do it, you're more than welcome.
I'll make a motion that we elect Mayor Pro Tem Lynn Perry.
I'll second that motion.
What if I don't call for? We got a.
You want to talk about it?
We got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries six zero. We have two proclamations tonight. The first proclamation is for Economic Development Week, which is May sixth through May tenth, whereas more than one thousand economic development or related professionals worldwide are committed to creating, retaining, and expanding top-tier opportunities that facilitate long-term equitable community growth, and the economic development of professional cultivates thriving neighborhoods, champions sustainable sustainability and resiliency, boost economic prosperity, enhances the quality of life, and builds robust tax bases. And economic development professionals operate through a diverse economic environments, including rural, suburban, and urban settings, local, state, and national governments, public-private partnership, chambers of commerce, institutions of higher education, among many similar organizations and associations. So, May sixth through tenth is this week as we sit, well, actually last week, I guess, but Mr. Jim Gibson? Sorry, is, is part of our economic development piece of the City of Rockdale, we appreciate all that you all do, and wish you continued luck and success. Thank you. And the second proclamation is for the TBI, which is Texas Bioscience Graduates, who go to school over in Hutto, Texas, at the Temple College, who are still high school students in Rockdale. The City of Rockdale recognizes the importance of education and preparing our youth for future success, and that whereas the Temple College Texas Bioscience Institute Middle College Program provides highly motivated high school students with the opportunity to excel in a STEM-focused curriculum, and whereas the dedicated students have shown exemplary commitment and dedication to their studies, earning up to sixty college credit hours in addition to their high school curriculum, and whereas it is with great pride that we acknowledge the significant achievement of these students who have earned and are working towards an associate degree from Temple College before even graduating from high school, and whereas their outstanding achievements and exemplary behavior have made them role models for citizens, young and old. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the City of Rockdale extends its sincere gratitude and recognition to these, to these scholarly students who are part of the Temple College Texas Bioscience Institute and attend Rockdale High School. Alvin Lou, if you're here, raise your hand for us real quick. Alvin Lou, Jack Lucky, Jacey Hartley, Elizabeth Perry, Giselle Dunn, Alana Ramos, Leila Barrera, Mariana Castillo, and the two graduating students this year, but I don't see Shakira Richards and Carissa San Miguel. Be it further proclaimed that the City of Rockdale commends these students for their unwavering dedication, hard work, and commitment to their education. I, Lynn Perry, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Rockdale, do hereby set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Rockdale to be affixed on this thirteenth day of May twenty twenty-four. So congratulations to you all. You all have done a great job representing, continue to do a great job representing Rockdale and being a role model for the, the other students in the school to have someone to look up to. So we're proud of you, and Ms. Esme is, is a graduate of Temple College and very proud of y'all for extending that, and we'd like to take a picture of you all, and also have a proclamation.
Y'all can add that to your scholarship portfolio, winning a campus scholarships, hopefully.
I just see I was supposed to sign this, and I didn't do it yet.
Have an autograph session.
Y'all get in here.
Yeah, they're probably not going to brag on themselves, but aside from attending to, you know, Bloomington County Temple College, they make that drive every day to go to school. So they have to wake up at five or six in the morning, drive all the way to Hutto, go to school, make it back, go to their athletic sessions, and still participate in everything. So we're just super proud, great role models for our city. And also, put us to our Rockdale High School for partnering with Temple College and providing this program for our kids. It's done wonders for, for our daughter, Tatiana, and it's just a great program. So thank y'all for being brave and making that drive to Hutto, which knows the dangers.
And Kathy, will you take the others to? I gotta sign them still.
Congratulations to the parents as well, I left that out.
Again, congratulations to you all.
You're welcome to go, or you're welcome to stay as well.
Everybody leave at once.
Thank y'all so much.
All right, we have citizen communication. We have for non-agenda item, we have Joyce Dally, and then on agenda items, we have Daniel Willie and Walter Hurd. Mr. Hurd, did you want to be on the non-agenda item? There's not a, there's not an agenda item specific for, I think, what you're here for. Did you sign the, I think you probably wanted to sign this one.
I didn't sign the right one.
I think you wanted to be on non-agenda item.
I did want to be on the agenda.
Okay, well.
I had an opportunity to speak.
You will. Ms. Joyce Dally, there you are.
I just wanted to give a really quick update on the new water line installation. I'm in that old part of town that I have no idea when my water lines were even laid. My house is from nineteen oh three, nineteen oh five, so, and I don't think there were water lines at that point. But anyway, the new line is absolutely wonderful. I can't say enough about it. There's no discoloration in the water. The, the force is absolutely unbelievable because you couldn't, could never turn your faucet on full force. It'd run you out of the house. But the taste, the taste is absolutely wonderful. I wanted to bring water in for everybody to taste, and decided maybe that was not a good idea, but instead I will invite every one of you to stop by my house and drink what, Rockdale water with me. Thank you all.
Mayor Pro Tem, we also had someone come in late that's going to want to speak.
On agenda or non-agenda?
On the non-agenda, I believe, Niels Berry has come in.
Who is this?
Niels Berry.
Oh, Niels. Really, I saw him over there a while ago. No? Okay, all righty, moving on then. We have the consent agenda. Anybody have anything in the consent agenda that?
I have a question.
More about, questions?
I have a quick question for Roxanne. I'm sorry that it's taken me twelve months to ask this question, but on the days of operating reserve, I know that from many years ago, we're in a much healthier place than we used to be, but I see days of required reserve, and then how many days we have in each of those lines. So when it says, what does required mean? Because we're obviously then not at the requirement.
Several years ago, council set that requirement for a number of days to hold in reserve for emergencies, rainy day funds, and they set it to a hundred and five days for each of our major funds, for the general fund and the enterprise fund.
So it's as much a goal as it is a requirement?
Technically, it is, it's a requirement, but we do have the flexibility that if we need to use it, it does fluctuate occasionally, especially in our general fund before our tax dollars come into play. This year's a little different. Our expenses and revenues, our expensive daily expenses have gone up, so that does change the way our numbers look a little bit, in that we need to, you know, get back to that hundred and five days.
If you could explain why we went down in the general fund?
For this particular month, we, we were down at the beginning of October, obviously, because we didn't have our tax dollars, and then we had a couple of bonds come in, and we held funds in our general fund savings account for those bonds. So it inflated our numbers a bit. Those bonds that are, the work has been completed, that the bonds were securing, so we paid the bonds back. So we are back down to the, let's just say, a more realistic number for where we are with our required reserves.
It was cornerstone bonds that we paid out, so now what will happen is her next action is filling that, those reserves back up to a hundred and five days. It's just catching it at that moment when the funds have gone out.
But as a, something that we chose ourselves, there's no kind of penalty when we fall below?
Absolutely not. No, this is, it was all.
It's, if I remember correctly, I was, I was on the council when we, when we upped it. It's a requirement that we have a reserve, however, we set the bar for the reserve.
Thank you.
Anything else on consent agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as is?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor? Motion carries six zero. We will now conduct a workshop to consider and provide direction on the budget process, including city council priorities, the calendar, and potential childcare tax exemption. And Mr. Willie, is this when?
Yes, sir.
Wherever you went, wanted to speak, okay.
Yes, sir.
So last year, Brad and I were part of the, at least Brad and I, I think it was just Brad and I, wasn't it? Budget, budget process. And so the way that, that kind of works is the city manager, along with her staff, prepares the budget based off of the previous year's budget, what trends they see, as well as input from the council on what we want to prioritize money towards. So I think, Barbara, at this point, aren't we at the, aren't we at the time of the calendar when we need to prioritize, or we need to give you all some direction of what our priorities are, whether it's parks or streets, public safety, whatever, whatever it might be. And then they will take that and develop a budget based off of that and present it, and it goes through at least two readings. And then I think we'll have a stab at it before even the first reading. And then as we adopt and, or adapt, as we get closer, they will change anything in the, in the budget that we would like to see more, more priority towards or taken away from, and then ultimately we'll, we'll approve it. So how do we, how would you like, I'll, I'll let you take over on this one.
So the, the first thing that I need to get direction from the council on is, we have essentially three different positions that we can take. We can bring in exactly what we brought in last year and set a tax rate to do that, and that is a no net revenue. Those numbers will all be calculated by the county, or we can do no net revenue plus three and a half percent. And that is what all communities in Texas are required to do unless you're under thirty thousand, and we hit in that under thirty thousand. So we can actually do a what they call de minimis, which is what we did last year. We take whatever our revenues are, which was one point seven last year, one point seven million, and then we added five hundred thousand dollars to that. That was partly so that we could fund two new police officers, which were a hundred thousand apiece per officer, once you get the officers and the, the cars, et cetera, and just making sure that we could take care of things that were needing to get taken care of. The issue with that is, depending on which of those, or, sorry, the third way is to say we're going above the de minimis, we're going to raise more than five hundred thousand, at which point you have to immediately set an election date for the citizens to vote on whether or not they want you to maintain that tax rate. So typically, communities are not going to do that because citizens are not going to be in favor of that in general. So depending on which way you go, if we either do the no net revenue or no net revenue and three and a half percent, I need to file that budget with you on August twenty-ninth. If it's de minimis, I need to file it with you July twentieth. So if we're going to do anything above three and a half percent, I would recommend that we go ahead and establish the earlier calendar, because that means that there are times, if it's over the eight percent, that residents could then petition to roll that tax rate back. So that would be the first thing that I would ask you is my recommendation is we take the earlier calendar just to give the flexibility, even if we don't go up to that value.
The earlier calendar was July?
Yeah, we'll have to submit to you July the twentieth, and then we have to do the tax rate and budget adoption by August nineteenth.
Okay, so we have to have it adopted by August nineteenth.
Yep.
So we have to, July twentieth is a trigger date, and then you have to have two, two meetings to adopt, to, for, to go through two readings, correct?
We'll do, yes, sir, we'll do a budget adoption and a tax rate adoption, and so we'll, we'll have that ready for you. But that means, that means that the budget that we're preparing right now, because the staff is already involved in that, is we would actually have it filed with the city secretary by July twentieth.
And does one of those meetings have to be a regular meeting?
Yes, sir.
And so that would be the August, August meeting? And so that would be the August, August meeting would be our regular meeting?
Typically.
And that would be for the second reading?
It can be. Now, the, our attorneys told us last year that you can make any meeting a regular meeting. You just declare it as a regular meeting. So it doesn't have to be on the second Monday of the month. Because typically, coming through August, then y'all start having weekly meetings so that we can deal with the budget. And sometimes you even have like a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so that you can ensure that you've got your state mandated hearings taken care of.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. When would, I think it's important that we have at least one budget workshop for, for all council members, yourself and any department heads that you would choose to, to bring along with that. When do, when is the appropriate time for that? Does that come after y'all take a stab at it? When, when would you like for that to happen?
I would say anytime after July the 20th. What, what I'd like to get tonight is tell me what your priorities are. And we're going to be talking about some tax implications with the businesses or the business that Mr. Willie runs. And then let us create a budget. I'd like to have two council members again, or at least one, that will sit with us through that process so that we can tell you what our, how we're thinking, how we're generating our numbers and what we're doing. And then we would do a workshop after July the 20th.
Can you still like guidance, like a little direction tonight? Are you saying as far as like example last year when we said two police officers, is that later that much detail? Or do you need that detail tonight?
I just need to know, do you want it to, the conservative approach, in my professional view, is say that we're going to take the earlier calendar, even if we do not raise an additional dollar of taxes. It just means that should we need to, should something come up, you have that ability to do that.
I think Brad's question was, what do you need priority wise? When do we give you that?
You can, you can start tonight by telling me, is it streets? The police department is not asking for additional officers this year.
That's what I asked. Do we know, do they, are we getting that information tonight? Do we know the street? I know that your email sent out regarding Chipsville's going in O'Kelly, and I think like three, four streets. So do we need that information somewhat to be able to know which direction we want to go?
You could, but if you tell us, okay, this year I really want to concentrate on streets, or we're going to have a shortfall in what we can do for the water lines because of the delay and when we did the project and actually getting the second part out to bid. Just if you can give me general advice, then we can start putting that into the budget.
I think personally, I don't know if y'all know what Barbara's talking about on the shortfall on the water line replacement. But the engineers gave us, we took a loan for X amount of dollars. And they told us this should get you X amount of feet. We're not getting X amount of feet for that dollar because the project has drugged so long that the price escalation has limited the amount of footage that we're getting in the ground per dollar. That's something that's been very important to people for years and years and years. And it's something that we told the citizens we were doing. We were given bad information. So I feel like we need to deal with that some way, somehow.
Just for, for a question though, COVID caused a lot of the price. I mean, we couldn't start because of COVID. And then when COVID was over with, the price had gone up so much. So wasn't there a number you gave someone there, a percentage saying of the 100% that y'all thought we were going to get to do? Now it's like six, is it 60%? There was a number you said because it's gone up so much more price per foot?
It is. So we originally thought that we were going to get 120,000 linear feet, correct?
Correct.
127,000.
127,000.
What, what do you think now? What's the new?
And now we're looking at more 65,000 linear feet.
Yeah, they're going to have these last quotes come in. It could be anywhere from 55 to 65.
So the joy, the area that Joyce is in, we did the first 10,000 linear feet. And then the engineers came back and said costs have escalated from essentially $130 a running foot to put the PVC in the ground to about 185, 195 up to 215. And it's like, so.
And also they took it from where you could, you could abandon the old lines. And then they said, no, you got to take the old lines out. And so it kind of, they changed the playing field.
Changed the parameters on us.
So I just, just, I think we need to be aware that that's, we've told the citizens they're getting that. We're not going to get all of it. We understand that. They're not all, not all at once. But we do need to, I feel like we do need to put some priority on that to fulfill what we said we were going to do.
And Jim Gibson, I think, had a really good idea. We've already got the plans designed. We can go out for a bond. The two things that are hitting this is the prices went up, but you have a really good public works director who took the price down from what we needed to get done at the sewer plant to meet TCEQ. And so we're going to save multiple millions of dollars there. We can use what we thought we were going to have to pay back and just get that amount, float that amount in bonds and continue the water work. Because the plans are already designed. It's already engineered. It's ready to go. And if we did it that way, then we wouldn't use the Texas Water Development Board with all of their delays and all of the things that they need. We would just take those designs and then move off to our bond consultant that we've been working with on cornerstone and keep pushing ahead on the water line project.
Do we, what does that get us in linear footage? If you take the bond?
We'll have to look at how much we can do. But if you figure that you're talking about, in rough numbers, $200 for every foot, so you can start calculating out how much you're going to get into the ground.
It also depends on how much the cost of the waste removal program plan is. When we've decided to go to cut back to an equalization basin and not put in a third basin, they projected to be about three and a half million dollars and we had ten and a half with a total budget. Now they're saying anywhere from six to seven and a half. So the amount that we're going to have extra is going to be smaller than what we originally, originally had hoped for, for the same reason that the water went up. So it depends on how, how that quote goes. Also, how much we'll be able to do.
Barbara, do we have a dollar amount that we're short more about?
In terms of?
In terms of what we, right, the replacement as to how much we had allocated or budgeted.
I'm thinking it's going to be around $10 million is what we're going to need.
To finish the project.
To finish the project.
At 100%.
At 100%, yeah.
So that's just one thing to consider.
At least, I mean, I know everybody wants something, but are we full now with the police officers? I know we did radios and all kinds of new cars. Are we good on that?
No, sir. We're still hiring. We're trying to fill three, three positions.
But, but is our money budgeted, Barbara, from last year? That's what I'm saying. It's not like, okay, now we need an extra, you know, we wanted 10, now we want 15 guys.
No, we're budgeting for what I've asked you for. The problem is just finding.
Find the people. Okay.
Finding the applicants that want to do the job.
So.
My question I have, of course, safety is a big priority, I think, for all of us. Do you feel like we need to increase the pay? Would that attract more candidates for us? I mean, do, do we need to budget that?
We address that part of it in my budget proposal.
Okay. So we'll include that as well?
And we don't have to give all the, this is not, she doesn't have to walk away with these priorities tonight. We can think about it.
And that would be one for me, safety, so increasing the pay.
And then the calendar, if you think that doing the more conservative calendar makes sense.
Yes.
The shorter calendar.
I do remember last year, we did schedule several in a row, then, but we made it in time so we didn't have to do it.
And I would encourage anybody that would, wants to sit in on, on, on the, when they go over the budget for the, before they present it to council, as Brad and I did last year, it's very helpful in understanding what in the world Barbara and Roxanne are talking about a lot of time. So it's, it's very helpful. So if you can make it, and it's, it's, it's good information.
And it leads into the state in their last session did a daycare ad valorem exemption because daycares are like many other businesses where they have a very slim margin, particularly the type of daycare that would be able to take advantage of a property tax exemption. They have to participate in the Texas Rising Star program. And 20%, I think of the kids have to be in subsidized childcare. The concern that I have with this, and I have, I think he runs a good business. He's a, you know, a good man, is the state put the entire burden on our local taxpayers. And we've got 70% of our taxes, or the money comes from homeowners. And so the state very graciously said, yes, go to your local communities and exempt out of local taxes. So the state essentially just put all of that back on the local. We've got two that I think might comply. Tiger Town pays $1,200 a year in taxes, is what I was calculating. And Love and Learning is paying about 3,368. So if you send us in this direction, then we can do no less than 50% ad valorem tax exemption. And it will apply to any childcare business that meets the conditions of being, having the subsidized childcare and participating in the Texas Rising Star. But just know as you're doing that, that in this community, it's not shifting it to another business. It's shifting it to the homeowners. So this, I think the county has approved him at 75%. So it's up to the council. If you say yes, then we'll come back and start and bring the ordinance to you to change that. Because it is up to the local communities of whether or not they think that's a good idea.
Is there, is there any other childcare facilities in the county that are, are able to do this? Is there any in Cameron that?
So, so I own one in Cameron as well. That will apply.
Should we come out?
Yes.
So again, my name's Daniel Willie. I appreciate y'all listening to me tonight and hearing what I have to say. So yes, I do own one in Cameron as well. But I think more than me just owning these facilities, what it does is people are going to be looking. If they're going to move to your community, if they're going to buy these 600 homes that are being developed, they're going to have to have childcare. And, and right now, I'm going to just give you a few statistics. Do you start the clock for me? And so, so it was a little, I'm going to expand a little on how this came to be. So this was actually, oh.
There's no clock, Daniel. We're in a workshop.
Oh, good. Good. Like that.
When I get tired, I.
I got you. I got you. So this was actually on the general election in November. And in the city of Rockdale, it passed by over 60% of the, of the citizens. So 60% of the community felt this was a need that they had to have. A couple of things I'm going to throw out there is that 63% of families in rural Texas live in what's called a childcare desert. So 63%, 63% of every family struggles to find childcare. And what that means is there's a disproportionate amount of spots for kids, as are that need kids. Right now, in Rockdale with no growth, both facilities are full. Both of them are at capacity. In Cameron, both of ours will be at capacity. The one that Sarah's already in will be at capacity in less than six months. And both communities are going to experience tremendous growth. It also kind of goes back to what Ms. Holly was saying. You don't automatically get to do this. So Texas Rising Star program is probably one of the toughest things we've been through. They come in, they grudge, they judge everything you have, from your teachers, your playground equipment, your curriculum, everything. And we were very fortunate and worked very hard. We're the only four-star agency in Mylum County, except for a school facility in Cameron. So we've worked very hard at that. And also to be able to take subsidized kids, it's important because you have a lot more people needing childcare than can afford it right now. Now, this does not apply to home daycares. So you can't open a daycare in your home and all of a sudden get a tax exemption on your home property. The other thing I want to talk about is how many is this going to affect? Roughly 17% of 15,000 childcare centers in Texas will be able to apply and get this. So what it does is allows people that want to, I hope I'm not the only daycare here in a year, maybe two years. But you're going to get good ones that come in. They're not going to be able to come in, apply for this tax exemption and not be good. They're going to have to coincide with Texas Rising Star. They're going to have to go through the Texas Workforce Program to take subsidies. And it's not always easy. Your cash flow is affected by those subsidies because you're not getting paid every week like you are by a parent. You're waiting two weeks, sometimes a month, to get paid. I'll just give you, at Christmas, we were out $9,000 for the month of December because Texas just didn't catch up in time. And if you can't cash flow that, you won't be in business. Another statistic, they say that without some type of funding, 44% of childcare centers are likely to close their doors in the next year. That's a lot. In Rockdale, had we not reopened the facility on Ackerman, after COVID, you would have been down to one center. And that's another really strong statistic that after the pandemic, there were 30% less childcare centers in the state of Texas than they started. 30%. Here in Rockdale, it was half, you know?
Jay, I stopped. Where are the two? So it's, I know y'all's from Ackerman, there's the one by Dollar.
Yes, yes.
Does the church still have one there forever? The church had one there?
They have discovery days, right?
Discovery days? Is that still, I guess it's not open?
That's a, that's a half-day program for up to kindergarten.
Okay. Sorry.
No, great program. We actually have one of their teachers that teaches on her off days there. It's only Tuesdays and Thursdays. So not, not a full-time solution. So that's kind of where we're at. We're, and everybody's looking at different areas now. And this seems to be, you know, what everybody's looking at. I'm looking at a facility in Thorndale, Thrall, Caldwell. And it really kind of comes down to where, you know, you're going to be able to survive with the growth and with the community support. And I think you said ours, I think it was about 1,400 last year.
I just did it.
That's, that's what I had. That's what I had. You know, that's not a huge amount overall, but that allows us to pay half of our water bill for a whole year. Or it allows us to pay 20% of our electric bill for a year. It allows us to buy a portable defibrillator for our facility, which I think is a great thing for anybody to have. It would also allow us to get, I think we priced out about $1,400 for teachers to get six hours with their travel for their continuing education. So it's a big deal to us, $1,400 is. So that's what I came for, to see if we could ask that you guys consider to give the maximum amount, the 100% tax abatement for a facility. And again, this doesn't just apply to me. This is an overall program for childcare centers.
Is the 1,400 50% or is that 100%?
That would be 100%.
100%.
And Love and Learning, have they approached yet?
No, they have not.
And so, and not to interrupt you, Protem, but once it's set, then it doesn't have to be, each, each entity has to fill out their program each year, but it stays with the city. And so how it works is we have to go out to each entity. You have to go out to the city and then the county within that city. There is no school tax exemption. School tax doesn't forgive you. They always want theirs. So you, you have to go like, so we meet with Cameron, we meet with the county. We will meet with Thrall, Thorndale, and then Williamson County to see where it kind of all shakes out.
Do you know the county's reasoning on why they did 70% and not 100%?
I, I do, and I don't. One comment was made that this was a, it's a for-profit business. Well, we're all for-profit businesses out there. I, I don't know about Love and, Love and Learning could be a nonprofit. I'm not sure. It's a nonprofit. But 99.9% of us, we're, we're all profit, you know? And, and, you know, when I say I'm looking at other places, honestly, it takes three or four now to. The margins are slim, you know? The margins are slim. It takes three or four of them to kind of make it work. So.
So that was somebody's holdup at the.
That was somebody's holdup, the commissioner, was that we're a for-profit business. And I said, we're all for-profit businesses. That's the childcare model. You have, even within the school system now, and we're looking at a lot of school business, they don't want to manage it themselves anymore. And it's a great program. Rockdale, like they have the clinic there. You know, that they can actually lease out space to a childcare center for us to handle their after-school program. There's multiple centers in Temple, Belton area that do that right now. That's why I want to talk to Kathy over there.
50% is the minimum. I think I also read that somewhere it's non-transferable from one owner to another if you sell out.
Correct.
It doesn't go with the facility?
Correct.
Well, I'm a big supporter of this and thank you for what you do for our little Rockdalian. We need it. And I appreciate that. I'm a big supporter of this. However, I'm, I'm not sure how much we're going to be able to afford, whether that be 50% or 100%. I think given our demographics, the working family, parents need this and able to go, go to work and get ahead, not to mention our development that we have. So for me personally, I'm, I'm for it.
So let, let me ask you one more question. So if we were to do it tonight and say we're doing. So if we were to do it tonight and say we're doing 50%, 70%, 100%, whatever, does that percentage go to the next person that, that, if Love and Learning comes in next week and says, hey, we want part of this, that same percentage carries, no matter who it is, as long as they qualify?
If you meet that, if you meet that criteria.
They qualify, the percentage carries.
I, I will tell you, and just my knowledge, the other facility in Cameron, they're not Texas Rising Star certified. So they won't, they won't get the county participation unless they change that. So it holds you up to a standard where you're going to get the best facilities.
That's great.
You know, you're not just going to get somebody that's going to come in and open and keep all the kids in one room, you know? They're going to come out and look at everything you do and then continually be judged by that at least once or twice a year.
And is there, is there a timeframe that, that we're trying to meet? Or if we take this information, go home and sleep on it, can we make this next month? Is there, is there a trigger that we're looking at?
Right now. Right now.
Yeah. I know what your trigger is. I'm up today.
I would think that we would do it concurrent with the new budget. Because that's where it's the most, you know, you've thought about it, you've put it into the new budget. It's more orderly. That's, that would be my recommendation, is that you give us the direction, we go off, we create the ordinances, and we have everything effective as of October 1st.
And is this effective forever and ever?
I don't see that you would ever take it away.
You have to apply. So next year, I'll apply for it again. I think, I think, okay, here's, here was the biggest problem with this. The state of Texas came out and said, we're going to do this. And then they didn't tell anybody the rules of it. So until about 45 days ago, we didn't even know how to apply. I mean, we talked to, I'd talked to Barbara earlier, she was very helpful, but we didn't know how to apply. Finally, a group came out representing, it was called Risk for Kids. And they went through the whole process of you have to get it ratified by each entity. Then you have to go and get a Form 8055 from the appraisal district. You fill out that with all your information, and then you take it back to the appraisal district. Then you go back to the entity and get them to match up. So up until about 45 days ago, honestly, nobody knew how it worked. I, I would like to tell y'all, yeah, tell me tonight. I don't know if we can get it done, you know, for this tax period even. But, you know, we're looking at the future. I, I'm not even opposed, I talked to a friend that I work with. You know, I'm not even opposed to looking at another building on the other side of town. I, I mean, you know, we're, we're only, we're only licensed for about 60 kids here, you know, and we're full. And we haven't even got the housing development kids. And to me, those houses are very nice, but that's your 25 to 40-year-old people that are going to live in that neighborhood, and they're going to go to work every day, probably in Austin or Round Rock. Hopefully, a lot of them here, but realistically, they're going to go out of town. They want somewhere to leave their kids. And so there may be even need on the other side of town to have another place. So.
All right. Well, fortunate for you, we don't vote in workshop, so you don't get an answer right this second, no matter what.
Daniel, thanks for the information.
No, thank y'all. Thank you for listening and hearing and for bringing it up. So we appreciate that.
That's great.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else associated with workshop?
Are there any grants available to open up in here?
They, they closed, and we did get a grant. We got a grant. Can I answer that? Is that okay? If I talk?
Give him a minute.
I'm sorry?
You got it.
I'll give you a minute, yeah.
Yes, there were, okay. I'll be honest with you, I missed out on the COVID grant. COVID grant was probably anywhere between 180 to 200,000 to each facility. I, I missed it by about six months. I was fortunate enough to get what's called an expansion grant. Is where you work with companies that you expand in. We worked with several really good companies here in the area. We have some of their kids coming into our facility where they get a chance to work with. But it requires you use all that funding to better your building and better your, your property. I can't use it for a mortgage. I can't use it for taxes. I can't, I have to use it for equipment. And I can't remodel completely. I can upgrade. But that's that grant, called an expansion grant. We're continually looking. I'm working on a playground grant right now that would redo the whole playground, but it's only a matching grant.
Can you use it for like a defibrillator thing you were talking about?
There's special grants out there just for those things, you know? So that's what I, I don't, I always tell people, I don't work day-to-day in that office. I have an office in Cameron. And right now, you got to continually be looking, you got to be continually looking for funding. Who's going to, you know, donate to this? Who's going to provide a grant for that? Just solely off kids anymore is hard.
You said home, home daycare is exempt, not exempt from that?
From taxes? No, sir, they're not participating in, they can't participate in that.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hurd?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't believe yours, there's an agenda item specific. I think you were supposed to be on this sheet. So you, I think I know why you're here, maybe.
I feel like, I feel like to wrong sheet. I put it on the other sheet, sir.
We're going to.
I'm sorry.
We're going to hear Mr. Hurd, and then we're going to go take care of executive session, so.
Y'all heard mine before. I've been here, this is my third time, and I'm talking about a water disconnection inside of my meter box. Where it came loose. City had done this, I guess, to put it together. This is my pipe coming from my house, which they had to cut off, rig it back up to put water in it once it was fixed. But anyway, this part came loose. This part here came, this part screwed on to the meter, you know, the water meter. And this part goes to my house. Okay. It ran for two, for a whole month, and I reported it twice. And, and the, and the city has a record of when I called it in. And I even went by one time, but the ditch was full of water. And I, at that time, and, and this, I noticed the water in December, but it ran all through January. And I had reported it, and nobody came, if somebody came out, they didn't tell me anything. It just kept running. And so when, on February the 9th, when my water bill was being prepared, I guess, they noticed it, that the, my bill was higher than it was, had been going, you know, like way up. And so they sent Bobby Joe, which is one of the employees, out to look. Because I had looked all over my yard, no water nowhere. My water in my house, pressure in my house had not decreased. And so all of this was going on, and I, and I'm steadily trying to find out where the water was coming from and hoping somebody would come out and tell me something, you know? But anyway, where the water leak was, was right here on the end of this, because this didn't have any adhesive on it, hardly inside, to hold it together. And so it leaked, and I took videos of it after I cleaned the box out and everything, after we talked about it on the phone. But anyway, I assumed, I said it was poor workmanship, and they said it was, the city said it was a leak. I talked to Ms. Holly and Gerald about it, and they said that it was a leak. And I said it was a separation of the pipe. But it did come through the meter. So they want to charge me for it because it came through the meter, and the meter was spinning, I guess. And so they want to charge me for it when, they didn't do the work right. You can see that's not even straight right there. Supposed to fit up against there. Anyway, they want to charge me for the water right away after I complained about it and we found out where it was coming from. And I called it and told them that, okay, we got it. Bobby Joe came out, he found that it was running inside of the box and running out, out of the, out of the back of the box. I live on a hill, and it was running down off into the ditch. And so I'm looking, and had even run uphill. And that's the reason I had, I had me all confused, because that's at my neighbor's house. And I thought maybe it might have been coming from there. But it, and then it went on downhill through, through the ditch. But anyway, I'm charged, like, I won't say so much, how much. But anyway, I'm charged, when I found out about it and I called it in, they told me to come on down there to the city and get, we'll hook you up with a, with a pay plan. You can pay for it all at one time, or you can get it shut off. So, you know, with the bill as high as it was, I went on the pay plan. But I went on it on a. In other words, I didn't agree to that, but I did sign the paperwork. And so that is where I stand. And like I say, this is my third time coming here before you. And I haven't had any, well, the second time, not the first time, Brett, the mayor, he agreed and said that was, okay, Walter, I agree with you, we're going to fix it. Now he's retired. I don't have any, nobody speaking to, for me from the council or for the city. I talked with Ms. Holly. Ms. Holly said that he, she and I couldn't come to an agreement, okay? So I asked her, I said, well, I want to talk to your boss. And she told me, after a smile, I'm it. So that's the reason I came to the council.
Well.
To talk to someone else.
Let me jump in. Out of, out of respect for time, I, I did, I told you last month that I would come see you. I came see you twice. You weren't there the first time I spoke with your wife for extended conversation. The, the time that I did find somebody at home. I understand your wife explained to me exactly what you've been saying. I understand where you're coming from. I need to fill some of these, these people in on, on some conversations that have been had. I did give your wife a proposal of how I thought we could make this go away that was equitable to both the city and yourself. And I don't know if she passed that on to you or not, but I'm going to, I'm going to explain that to, to them. And I will be glad to come see you again.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm hope, I, I hope you can get, you can get my phone number, and I'll make, make sure I'm at home or someplace.
I like, I like face-to-face, but I know where you live, and it's easy enough for me to get to. I will track you down.
Okay, okay. Thank you so very much. I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
We're going to now convene into executive session pursuant to a bunch of stuff here. Should the needs arise, applicable pursuant to the authorization by Title V, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, deliberation regarding real property, deliberation regarding gifts and donations, personal matters, deliberations regarding security devices, and deliberation regarding economic development. The time is five, sorry, 6:31. We are back from executive session, and we will continue on our agenda items. And we were at item. 10, resolution. Consider to take any necessary action on a resolution awarding the bid for the home program. So they put out proposals, and jump in anytime you want, Barbara, for seven new homes. And to the tune of 140,000, 142,000 for six of the homes, and I think 136 for the seventh home. So Ben, I'm glad you stepped up. Tell us a little bit about that, please, sir.
So what the staff's recommending is that we would award the bid to RM Quality Construction. They are the traditional winning bid in the past couple of years, and they do real quality work. And so they came in at the lowest, most responsible, which is why that's our recommendation.
You said they did the last one here?
They've done the last couple of years. So you can go to a couple of properties. You can go to 1200 Highland, there's two next to each other there. We have one on Vernon, we have one 14 Sand Oak. There's a lot of them. That RM Quality has done, and we received no complaints.
Not to drag out the, everything out, but just to remind the people watching, the dozen people that are watching, can you real briefly do the home, what it is again, how people, you know, the funding comes from, how, how they qualify for it? Just so I can remember some of the people, audience may not know what it is either. It's a great program.
Yes. So it is an income-based program that the state offers residents of the city to apply for. If they meet criteria, then they can have their home demolished on the lot that it's on and then rebuilt completely free as long as they live in that house for a certain amount of years, it's either four or five. If they sell before then, there's some deduction that they'll have to pay on that. But it's a real good program. And we are looking for applicants, so if you know anybody that may apply, please send them my way.
And so these, these seven homes have already, are people that have already applied?
Yes.
So once we accept this, they'll be ready to go into the construction phase of, of their program. And so we have a 5% match? Is that correct?
Yes.
Per home?
State pays 95, and we pay 5.
Right. So for our six homes, we're, we're, the city of Rockdale is going to end up contributing 44,250 for those six homes and 67,25 for the seventh home. Do, do we have any idea what those homes put back, bring back onto the tax roll per year at, at a, at a $150,000?
What's our tax? What do we get back on taxes?
Yes, ma'am. If, if a home is $150,000 value.
I can get that for you. I don't have it in my head. I just know that it's coming back. You're taking a home that's probably worth 15, 20,000 that goes back onto the tax rolls at 150,000.
Okay. And do these homes, if they're seniors, they lock in at the 150? And they stay that as long as they have their homestead exemption as a senior? But when they sell, it's just like any other house, it goes up in fair market value?
That is correct.
Their taxes, taxes follow the value?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Does the city approach any of, anyone about this? Like if there is a home that you see someone living in, and it's, you know just by looking at it that it would qualify, does the city ever knock on that door?
And then I had one question. There's, there's alternates in the proposal for carport and.
Gutters.
Gutters.
Gutters. Who decides if, if the, if those upgrades are taken, if those alternates are taken?
If there's money in the budget. So there's one that's going to get gutters this, this time. But typically, they bump up against what the state will pay, so they're not getting carports, and they're typically not getting gutters. But we're going to get one. If the prices come in reasonably, then they should get gutters.
So do, of the last five or six homes that we've done, or if you go, we've been doing this for a number of years, I think, since I've been on the council, been doing it. If you go back and look at those homes, are they being up-kept? Or are they dwindling back down to a $15,000 dwelling like that?
Nope.
Nope?
No, all are in good shape. And the other positive is there's a couple that they've improved even more. So they're actually investing in their own house as well.
Okay. And so is our, whether they choose an alternate or not, our 5% is $7,375, no matter if they upgrade or don't upgrade. That's, that's what we're looking at.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions or thoughts on it? How many did we do last year?
We did one.
And, and how do we, where is this in the budget, Barbara? Where do we put this in the budget?
We put it under Ben's budget, and the council has been, I think we're, we're still working off our last 40,000 that you gave us like two cycles ago. And then whenever we come back in, then we'll say, okay, can we get, you know, more money? And then typically, y'all will refresh that. Because it's, I mean.
Some of it's carrying over, some of this is going to carry over from last year's budget then, is that?
Yes.
In the, okay.
So one pushback I can imagine from at least a couple of houses I'm thinking of would be, how much, what's the difference in the taxes you're going to pay at $20,000, $25,000, and $150,000? Because some people might not even be, you know, they'd like, might like a new house, but they don't. but they don't think they can afford the taxes.
Is it, I mean, I, 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 uh, ask, maybe answer the question at the same time. Is that built into their mortgage, just like?
No.
No.
Well, yeah, I mean, in terms of, there is no mortgage.
Home's given to them.
So, they are given this house. The only thing that they have to pay is the insurance after the first year, that, 'cause that's included, and then the taxes. But normally, what's happening is their old twenty thousand dollar house was very drafty, and so their monthly utility bill is more than what they would pay in taxes, because these are very tight, three-two, very environmentally sound, and so they just, they just don't have those kind of energy costs that they have in the old structures. And that's normally how they make it up.
If they go delinquent on taxes, what happens to it?
It could, it would be, uh, taken away, but...
It goes to the county?
Yeah, I've, I've been doing this program in some form for thirty-seven years. I have not seen a house come back unless the owner died and there was no one in the family to take it.
I make a motion that we award the bid to RM Quality Construction for seven new homes.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries six zero. Uh, ordinance says, consider take any necessary action on the second reading of an ordinance for the amended twenty-twenty-four water conservation adopted drought contingency plans. So, this is the one we, the second reading, correct? Any changes since reading number one?
No changes.
I'm gonna ask a question. Um, our water line debacle has KSA written all over it, if I remember correctly?
Yes, sir.
Our drought contingency plan has KSA written all over it. Are we comfortable with our drought contingency plan is not gonna be a mess when we need to implement it?
I'm comfortable because it's an update to a previous plan.
Okay. Um, and we redo this contingency plan how often?
Every five years.
Five years? That was my only question or concern on it, if we had a, if you all had a comfort level.
Yeah, the, the part of the reason we, okay, say, there were several, but the biggest one is that to start from scratch with another engineering company would have been very, very costly, and they had all the documents, they had everything, they have a very qualified, um, uh, person, her name was Siglinda, I can't remember her last name yet, they call her C, and she does an excellent job, so this is a...
On the drought, you talking about on the drought contingency plan?
Yes.
Okay.
It's Siggy West.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance as read.
Second that. We got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries six zero. Uh, eleven B, consider take any necessary action on the second reading of an ordinance for amended street names for the cornerstone subdivision. This is the one that, uh, the first responders, uh, requested that some of those names be possibly changed due to confusion via radios or whatever it might be, uh, of calling people out to the wrong street because the streets had very similar names. Nothing changed since the first reading?
Yes, sir.
So, there, there you have it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance as read.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries six zero. Action items, considering, uh, twelve, excuse me, action items, A, consider take any necessary action on appointing a mayor for an unexpired term until May, I'm sorry, yeah, May of twenty-twenty-five.
I'm gonna make a motion that we publicize the application for two weeks on the radio station, the newspaper, as well as Facebook, before we make the appointment following that, two weeks.
I second that.
I add something to that, and that the same application process, uh, that we use for any other, uh, city boards or committees is utilized for that position. Got a motion and a second? All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Twelve B, consider take any necessary action on a recommendation to the city council regarding a plat submitted by Beacon Land Services for property located west of Walmart on US seventy-nine, AKA property ID sixteen-three-six-six, Rockdale, Mylum County, Texas, into lot two A. Mr. Williams, you have the floor, sir.
They're taking the one big lot, dividing it into several lots across seventy-nine frontage. There's no objections from us on what they're replating here.
So, that right there is not the Dollar Tree? That's the one west of it?
That is Dollar Tree.
I meant Dollar Tree, sorry.
That's Dollar Tree.
That is Dollar Tree.
Yeah. There's actually like four, their proposal's gonna be like four lots across the front, or five?
Four.
Four, four across the front, this being one of them.
And they're gonna go all the way to the back to the road tracks?
Nope. They're, the, one of the lots will, but the, what we're seeing is we, we allowed them to pull this out so they could move the Dollar Tree ahead.
Gotcha, okay.
And so, they're...
'Cause I was confused on that packet, I was like, well, I know we're gonna develop, it's like they gotta easements and...
I, I, I don't know what you had in your pack, and I had to get a clarification on it. I had to see the, uh...
Yeah, that's the Dollar Tree right there.
Yeah.
So, the, eventually, there's gonna, the, the, the plan is to subdivide it into four lots. It's one lot right now, this is gonna be the second lot, the other one will remain big enough to still subdivide three more times?
Yeah.
It's, it'll be a total of, it'll be four out parcels at the front, and then the fifth will be the, the remainder.
Fifteen acres or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything meets, meets everything that, that you all look at?
Well...
Water's...
I'll say, from our standpoint, yes. From your standpoint, oh, boy.
I hate oh, boys. Could you send us an email and tell us what oh, boys are about, please, Barbara?
No, this is, everything's fine.
This is fine.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept planning and commission's recommendation and approval of the short-form subdivision.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries six zero. Twelve C, consider take any necessary action on a recommendation to the city council regarding a preliminary plat submitted by Peter Morales for the property known as fifteen-hundred East Belton, Rockdale, Mylum County, Texas, into three lots.
Staff had had some concerns. Uh, they amended and, and agreed to what staff recommended, especially being the street ending in a cul-de-sac. Uh, we're trying to avoid having dead-end streets where deliveries have to be made and then backed out, or fire trucks have to back out, so, uh, they agreed with us, and they planted this with a cul-de-sac on it.
Does that cul-de-sac meet the standards that we were using out at Cornerstone for, for, uh, cul-de-sacs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Size-wise? And there was something also on some utility easements on that particular one. Did they grant you the utility easement down Belton?
They granted a portion of right-of-way so that way we can correct the street right-of-way with to reflect the local road.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything?
I mean, technically, if, I wanna know, there's a water line that the street goes across, but we have that all over Rockdale, so, you know.
And streets are by nature utility easements, so anytime you have a right-of-way contained within it is a utility easement, and you'll see an abandonment, well, we're gonna abandon an alley, and there's a gas line in it, so we're asking for a utility easement to be laid over it. So, that, that's just the way that streets work.
Yeah, that's further on the agenda, that one, isn't it? Yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve action item twelve C as read.
Second that motion.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries six zero. Twelve D, consider take any necessary action on a recommendation to the city council regarding a final plat submitted by DF Enterprises LLC for property located at Cypress Trail Loop, known as property ID two-four-three-eight-two, Mylum County, Texas, into twelve lots.
In that same file that you have, oh, boy, I'll give you three letters, ETJ, and this is the land that we met before, and, uh, they have met everything that we asked them to do. They have met the previous concerns, and so they've resubmitted, and...
Our biggest hiccup was fire protection, and they, they met...
It won't be fire suppression.
Right.
It'll be supply.
Right.
Okay.
Because, that's all that's available.
That's all, that's all we can do is, is have a location to fill, a tanker truck to pump to, yeah. But that's better than nothing.
And so...
These had the flag lots that had the narrow driveways, they've widened those driveways. Everything now meets what we asked for them.
This, this, this only has to come to us one time. This is the second time it came to us because we asked for those modifications to the original submitter. Is that correct?
It was, it's a different kind of a plat. It's not the short form. This actually had a preliminary where you have to look at the layout, see if you like it, and then you didn't, so it had to go back, fix the layout, and then it comes back in as a preliminary. Then they have to go do all the construction that makes it okay, then the final plat comes to you. It's much more like Cornerstone was, where it's a longer process.
Okay. And they've done all that construction, if I understood, if I read it correctly, yeah. Okay. All right. Scott, you and Kyle are up.
I'll make a motion that we approve action item twelve D as read.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries six zero. Twelve E, consider take any necessary action under request from Bobby Dollywall to abandon an alley wholly surrounded by, sorry, can't read it with the microphone, request for property in the one-hundred block of San Gabriel and the four-hundred block of East Cameron, dedicate a utility easement for drainage and sewer running north-south, and three, dedicate a public utility easement blanketing the abandoned alley.
The map is not showing correctly, 'cause north is to the side, which it should be at the top of the page, but if you look at the top of the page, it shows a drainage easement that he is giving to the city along with a ten-foot construction easement. In return for that, what he would like is for us to abandon the alley, and we will donate that back to him for free, but we will be overlaying an easement in, on that alley because there's a gas line in there. What the public utility easement does is it gives us the ability to go in there and do drainage work that we've needed to do, and then he can also add a sewer for development that he's gonna be doing further east of the store that he has, and it will allow it to get back to Mylum where there is a sewer main back there. And so, this accomplishes quite a bit, but he's giving us the easement for free in return for an alley that's being abandoned, but covered with an easement.
And what is this property? Is this commercial? Is it residential?
Yes, it is commercial. This is the property that's gonna be east of the police station.
East of the police, so where all the trees are down?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
Okay.
So, on the extension of what would be Rice Street is where the city needs to put in some drainage that, and the public works director has all of that planned out, but we need an easement to get it back to Mylum, and so this will do that.
What did we do a couple months ago when we abandoned an alley for the property owner? Did we charge them anything?
Well, it depends, yes. So, when it was the Catholic Church, we, we charged them fair market value, and on this one over here, I think they, y'all established a value. So, here, what we'd be doing is saying, we're establishing a value of the utility easement that's actually larger than the abandoned alley.
That was my concern, is to stay consistent, since I've been up here, yeah, the two that we've done, they had to pay.
Yeah.
But we didn't buy anything back?
Right.
Right.
Correct.
The council. So, instead of selling, we're, we're horsewhipping.
This would normally be, we would be buying that easement from them.
Okay. Have we, uh, I would assume that you all have put a pencil to the dollar value of the land that we're talking about abandoning versus the purchase of the easement?
We did it more on land area, so, 'cause the land is all gonna be the same, and normally, if land is going, by example, ten dollars a square foot, and you put an easement on it, then it's only worth five dollars a square foot. The value goes down in half. So, whatever the value of the land is, we'd be paying him half that to put in the drainage easement that's showing at the top of the page. Then, he would be paying us the hundred percent of the value for the alley, but now we're also laying a utility easement over that to protect the gas line. So, in square footage, it comes out about the same.
So, if this is existing planted property within the city limits, and he's talking, do we owe him a sewer line at a later date when he divested, or does he have to?
Nope. It's his, on his dime.
It's on his, that's all, that's what I care about. Okay. Well, it'd be, just like Tim Arledge deal when he wanted to develop those lots on Ortega, he had to foot the bill for the...
That's correct.
The water and sewer.
Yep, that is correct.
Okay. Gerald, you have?
We weren't able to give Bobby access to a sewer because the property on the backside towards Mylum was owned by someone in Austin, and he could not get an easement. He has now purchased that property from them, so he has access now to that main that is on the southeast corner of his property there. So, uh, yeah, he's, he's getting a good bid for this, and the reason we're putting the drainage in there is because there used to be a drainage here, I don't know, fifty, seventy-five years ago, over years, and it collapsed and filled with dirt and brush, and all the water stood there into that woman's yard right next to it, and, uh, when Techstock came through and put in drainage for a large portion of seventy-nine there, we had no drainage for it to go. We put in about half the property distance with a twenty-inch or twenty-five, twenty-four-inch ABS pipe, and we've got the rest of it to carry it back, but we couldn't do it until we got this easement from them. That'll carry all the stormwater to Mylum and then down towards Bridge Park.
It's not going towards, uh...
No, it's not going towards the water.
It's not going towards Bott's title, or not Bott's, uh, Attorneys of Texas?
No.
Nothing's going in that direction, right?
Mm-mm. Nothing.
We don't need any more of that.
No, sir, it's not.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve action item twelve E as read.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion, excuse me, motion carries six zero. Uh, mo, uh, item twelve F, consider take any necessary action on approving the Cornerstone bid number one annual issuer report. So...
We were not aware we had to do these, or that we, that the council is required to approve them, but essentially, nothing has happened so far. We have, this first report shows that there's no delinquencies, and just, it just, we'll be giving these to you annually to know where we are with paying back, pardon me, the bonds that Roxanne's been paying. It just lets you know how much is actually going into the value of the land, what's happening, are we good with the bonds that were issued for Cornerstone? And the answer so far is yes.
Who, who puts this report together? There's a hundred and sixteen pages of Hebrew that you're trying to read.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is one of our consultants, P three, who does that, who, who prepares all these, and then asks us to go through and read it and understand it. So, we did, and then summed it up for you in those few sentences.
And so, the, the... And so the, the P three works for us, not for Cornerstone?
Yep. Works for us.
Okay.
And they charge Cornerstone even better.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna have to take your word on that one. Um, because I tried to read it. Pretty tough. Anybody have any questions or thoughts on it?
I'll make a motion that we approve item twelve F as read.
Second.
Did you second it?
Second, done about you.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries six zero.
Five.
There's only five here.
That's me, Larry.
Oh. My bad. Yeah. She told me what she was thinking. Shit, man, bro. Uh, we're worried for that person, sir.
G.
It's gonna be G.
Twelve G, consider and take any necessary action on renewing the real estate agreement with Beck Riot Commercial Real Estate for property at eleven sixty-six Highway seventy-nine, Rockdale, Texas seven six five six seven.
Yes, this is for the city's six acres that we, or that y'all agreed to list with Beck Reet. With specifically, this is Michelle Anderson, the broker, that is who we have the property listed with. And so we wanted to ask Michelle to come up tonight to see if y'all had any questions. This is just renewing the, the listing agreement for another year, right? Yes. But the, the cool thing is, and if Michelle wants to talk about it, it's her story to tell, is she secured a listing of another five acres that kind of sits catty corner, on the back corner of that, of our property. And so she has been marketing these two lots together. And the, the six acres that the city owns, it's, if you remember, it's very narrow, but it's very deep. So that actually limits the kind of development that can go in there. For example, if we were wanting a hotel to go in there, there's plenty of land, but it's shaped funky. But by having this property come to the side, now you can put something in the back that needs a little more width. And so she was able to pull that off and market the properties together. And we're hoping that some larger economic trends that have really, have been hindering any other investment and growth in Rockdale will start to correct themselves next year. Specifically, interest rates. If, the way that works is with interest rates being higher, the debt carrying cost for a new commercial development is going, going to be higher. And for a developer, they need to, in order to cover those costs, they go to those larger markets that can command a higher rent. So that, so that's why they're going to the tailors and the huddos. But if interest rates come back down, then Rockdale becomes a little more attractive place and for, for that investment and the deal can actually, they use the word pencil, but it actually works. So then we should start to see some other stuff unlock.
What are we now listing our six acres for?
Two dollars and sixty cents a square foot.
Which is?
Which? Six hundred eighty thousand.
And we purchased it how many years ago? At what?
Three hundred or something.
Yeah, it was, uh...
Two hundred fifty.
I think it was two fifty, yeah.
Thank you. Now, I read your report and it's good to see there's been a lot of action, but it seemed like everything was, not right now. It's not right now. Like Marriott, going to Taylor, which I get that, the Taylor market.
Just like you say, they don't pencil right now with what they need to charge.
But it's been a wide range. It's the hotels, it's the multifamily, it's the convenience stores, retail, all that kind of stuff. So...
And we have a, a, part of the sale is a development plan prior to sale, correct?
That's right. Now, like on the list that Michelle sent you, there's a lot in there that are buy and hold. And what y'all expressed to us and the direction that we gave to Michelle was, we're not interested in that. Y'all want to see something that's going to be an actual development project that will start to turn tax dollars.
Okay. And the first agreement we had was a year?
Right.
And that, and now we're gonna renew for, for a year. How much overlap in, in footage is there on the back of the lot between first piece of property and second piece of property? How, how over connected are they? Do you know?
I'd have to look at that. I didn't...
Have you already got it listed or you, you, you're signing a listing? You have got it, so it's already marketed? Okay.
Both of them together.
Okay, perfect.
Obviously separate.
Does the other one have access to it?
The other one comes out on that county road.
Three O A.
Three O A. Right.
It is in the ETJ. I've already sent an email to Barbara about annexing it in with the right kind of...
Would that be part of a, a...
A solid tweet. Can I get that?
A sale, a sale. If, if we sold our property along with that property, would it automatically annex in? It'd be?
Right. Well, like if someone was going to come in and say, put in a hotel, they would need utilities. And then at that point, they would come to the city to ask for that and then we would make them request annexation. So a sale could be contingent upon annexation.
That's, that's where I was going with it. I don't want her to waste her time if we say, no, if you're gonna buy these two properties, it's part of the city limits.
Right.
Is that what I'm hearing? Is that right? It will be?
Well, I mean, like Michelle said, there's a process we'll go through, but we'll just have to go through. It's not automatic. And we'll just have to go through that process when the time comes.
Our property is within the city limits, has been annexed. So if, if they want to do a joint development with the two properties, it's, then they would come in, we could request that they annex, but we don't have any control over the other property.
I'm asking, is that part of contingency of our sale? Do we make that part of the...
You certainly can. You might want to just look at what the, Jim is gonna be really good at giving you whether we can get payment in lieu of taxes or what the best economic deal at the time for the development. Because there may be ways that are more advantageous to us to not have it annexed, but he's the one that will be able to give you that, that data when it comes time.
Okay. So twelve G... Yeah, twelve G. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We're going once.
Item twelve G as read.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Hello, Delia Russell Becker. Hello.
Thank y'all.
Twelve H, consider and take any necessary action on the pool service agreement between YMCA and the city to cover pool management, operation, maintenance, and related, related services for the city pool at Veterans Park.
So the good thing is, this is, there's no increase in price. Last year it went from fifty to eighty thousand and it was kind of shocking. But this year they've left the price alone. This is the only recreation that the city has, is the city pool. And go ahead.
We pay them.
We pay them.
Then who, when, when the money's collected, do we get the money?
We get the gate revenue.
That's what I'm saying, the gate.
It ends up being...
Well, I'm sure it's not even a wash, but I'm just saying.
It's like, I think eight thousand.
No, I got a question this over here recently. And I, I was like, I think we get the, I mean, and once again, I'm sure it doesn't even come close, but I was like, we have to get the revenue.
Not even close.
I agree. I mean, you can't take the pool away. I mean, it's, it's great for the kids.
Pools do not make money. Those kind of things don't. But they do a good job running it. They also maintain it. They scrub it. They keep it clean. They do manage when the swim meets happen. They manage when the Mark Center's out there. They manage when the parties are out there. So, I mean, they've, they've really done a good job. So although eighty thousand's a lot of money, I think it's definitely worth it for the kids and what they get out of it.
When you go by, it's...
Pools, pools are a horrible investment financially. Even at your house.
I know.
Is it like a boat?
Oh, yeah.
They don't clean themselves.
Great.
You never heard, you have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you put in a fifty thousand dollar pool, you still got a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar pool.
All right. Uh...
I make a motion that we, I don't have it with me. It's in my packet.
Item twelve.
Twelve H.
We accept it as read?
Twelve H for the YMCA to manage.
I'll second that.
We don't need to wait for Scott. I got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries four zero with Mr. Scott abstaining for his restroom break.
On my packet for at least...
Item twelve I, consider and take any necessary action on the municipal maintenance agreement, MMA, with Text Dot to establish state and local responsibilities for state highways within our corporate limits. You don't have this?
Our current MMA plan has expired and so they sent us a new one. It, I don't see that there's any difference. What it does tell us is that we maintain the sidewalks on the state highways. We maintain any decorative lighting that we might want to put up. And we maintain any side streets with the stop signs and street signs. And then they manage the street studies and they manage the pavement and they manage their safety lighting. So it's, it's pretty normal and it's what we're seeing happening out on the west part of town where they did the, the study that we'll be getting back shortly for what was happening out by Walmart if the speed's too high, or if we need to get any actual signals out there. We don't have to pay for those yet. So this is just the formalization of that agreement.
So on the sidewalks, when the grass starts to grow over the sidewalk, is it the city or is it the business owner that has to keep that edged?
It is supposed to be the adjacent owner. What we're finding is they're not. So we have crews that go out and actually clean that now.
Are we just gonna accept that moving forward? I don't know.
It's a fight I've been fighting for years. I, and they've been kicking my butt at it.
If you, it was really bad out there because that was the first ones done. And you saw at every crease on the sidewalk where the grass and dirt's that high, nobody was taking care of it. You know, it's technically the business owners. Like at our store, we have to mow the grass and all that, but as a whole, it's not getting done.
Are we not able to send them a bill?
That is something that we can certainly look at doing. And...
You'd love that.
The council last year put an additional fifty thousand into Ben's budget. So that's part of what we're using for the beautification. But we can also use it to tag adjacent landowners for that work that's happening.
It's getting done. It looks wonderful. There's no doubt.
Way better.
It was really bad.
And we thank the council for all that they do for that.
Let me ask you this. Is the, we have a big curb failure problem out on the, on the west end where the curb is physically coming apart. Is that curb ours?
Nope.
Or is that Text Dot's?
Is it spalling or that it's coming off?
Yeah. At every, at every entrance, you have chunks of concrete missing and they worked their way out in the road and then vehicles push them back.
Is it from cars hitting the curb as they come in or?
It's just concrete over time. It's looking for the first place to break and that's the weakest, weakest place. So...
I may have the pictures of that. If you'll let me know, then I can let the area engineer, James Kramer, know. And then they'll, they should take care of that.
And then out at, in front of the intermediate school, we have physical separation between the sidewalk.
And the curb.
And the curb of three or four inches.
Okay.
So stuff, stuff's moving a lot out there. And I think it's Text, Text Dot stuff moving, not, not ours.
Yeah.
Um, if we get you some pictures of that, and then we still haven't really addressed our brand-new roads.
They are supposed to be checking that out. They, they know that it's a water problem. They don't believe that it is a city water problem. They think it may be a water table problem. But they are definitely checking into that.
Versus that?
It's on the east side over there by the, uh...
Rainbow Court by the Harvick Park on the westbound lane.
Westbound lane is deteriorating really bad right through there. It's just, I, I would like to keep the pressure on them. I mean, it's one of the...
Yep.
Things that causes a lot of heartache and headache through town. And it's, it's nice to come into town on a smooth road versus...
Yeah.
Potholes in a year-old road.
Especially when it just got laid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, um, I'll, I'll take the initiative and get you some pictures of the curbs.
That'd be great.
Another thing along that line is, is, in some ways seems silly, but how do we get them to maintain the color of the star?
I'm working with them on that. And he asked me what I would like. And I said I would like it to be visible. And so, um, but I'll find out what their plan is on that.
I think, Dave, it's gonna be, um, I had to guess, we're probably gonna end up with a, a student service organization pressure washing it twice a year for community service hours. I think that's what Text Dot's gonna say. Well, yeah, it's, it's traffic. It's dirt. But we can ask a question, but I don't think they're gonna do anything about it, unfortunately.
If they use that material that they use for striping, it's kind of asphalt-based with reflective granules even.
Mm-hmm.
Even that would have been, people have lasted longer than...
It's just dirt. I mean, it's, it's asphalt tracking.
Where we at?
We are on, waiting for a motion on twelve I.
I make a motion that we approve action item twelve I as read?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Twelve J, consider and take any necessary action on the request from Planning and Zoning Commission to undertake the final plating authority for plaits that do not require a variance. So basically, if, if it doesn't need to come to us for a variance, you're asking, can you all give the authority and not have to put an agenda item together? Is that correct?
So we've discussed it for expediency's sake. Sometimes people lose up to sixty days on, well, the Cypress Trail, for example, even. But they, they lose time. And y'all bogged down with the same stuff that we've already hashed through. And so Planning and Zoning Commission has agreed that they will take on the responsibility to do the due diligence and not bother y'all with it. But you can say yes or no. I mean, if you want to hear everything as we're doing it now, you say, keep it status quo.
Let me ask you this. Doug, I don't know how long you've been on the board. Is that, was that a control thing twenty years ago, the boards? Did they want to control this? Or how did that get in place?
It used to be the state legislature up until about maybe two thousand and ten or eleven, said that it had to go to the planning commission and city council. And then they said, okay, you can now let the planning commission be the final authority. And then they went, took the bold step of saying, you can actually let staff do it, but staff can't disapprove plaits. In the last session, they said plaits can approve, staff can approve or disapprove plaits. I think that's going too far for us. So what I would recommend is that any plat that is what we call ministerial, it must be approved. That it's stopped with the planning commission. And we'll just give you a notice of what gets done.
I knew what, I knew what that look was.
I was saying, like variances, for a variance or something like that?
Yeah. If it requires a variance, it must go to the planning commi, I mean, it must go to the city council because y'all are the only ones that can deal with that.
No, I agree. Because there's been, I, I don't think we've ever, since I've been on the board two years, I don't think we've ever said no. But I know we've, we have, since I've been on, I don't know.
Well, not since you, well, the Cypress Trail got kicked back, but it wasn't, yeah.
We, we kicked back. And y'all, correct. What I'm saying is, I do think it does take up too much time for somebody to get an answer. I really do. But then what happens is if we go, something happens and somebody comes to us and complains, we go, do we have any authority over that? I mean, once...
Well, they would, they would always have the ability to appeal it. Because the ones that the planning commission would be reviewing are only those that must be approved. So if there's discretion involved and they could deny it, that means it's coming to y'all anyway.
Because I do, because I do think it takes too much time. And you guys do a great job.
That, that's the way I would envision it. It, if we had a split vote or we had something that was indecisive or, or sketchy, we would just automatically kick the can down to council and then let them go. And, and if you're worried about it, you can always call in the department heads like Planning and Zoning every ninety days to say, what have you done? So that you don't get blindsided by something, the scenario you're talking about. There's things around it, but we just thought we could expedite.
Expedite things, there's no doubt about it.
And, and you know, before it wasn't really a problem. Ten years ago, it was not a problem. But when you're getting subdivisions coming in and a few other things, now expediency and money, you kind of want to move things along. So...
Would it, would it make any difference if it was in the city limits or in the ETJ? Or does it make any difference whatsoever?
If it's ministerial or, or... You don't have as many, ah, let me think. You don't have as many variances. Let me think about that.
It's, it's still if it's ministerial, thank you, man.
Yeah, I, I still, I, I'll stand on that, I'll stay, you know. Ministerial means that if we don't have a quorum at P and Z, it gets passed to you anyway, basically, it has to, it has to move and.
So, the recommendation is that we allow it to be handled at the planning and zoning.
And if you say so, then we'll come back with the ordinances to make that happen.
If you want to workshop it, you can workshop it.
No, we don't.
Probably Wednesday night would be good.
I make a motion that we approve action item.
I second that.
We've got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries five.
No, y'all do a great job, we know y'all.
That file's under, oh boy file.
Twelve K, consider taking any necessary action on approving a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, uh, the inner local purchasing system quote for the installation of downtown streetlights.
Well, Gerald makes his way to the podium. This is one of those items that we have also asked BBW to go after the engineer for errors and omissions because this is, you know, and another two hundred thousand for an engineering error because they made the box, the electrical box to go underneath the sidewalk eighteen inches deep and Encore wouldn't accept it.
So, to refresh our memory is that when this all got designed downtown, because I always think, I was on MDD board at that time, oh, they have these cute looking, nice little streetlights and all that, right? It's part of the whole project. And we go to get this project and we approve it, they'll know you can't, the lights aren't included because of that, is that why, is that what happened?
The boxes were not designed properly and Encore wouldn't accept it. So, we went out and bought our own lights thinking, well, that shouldn't be bad, and then this is the price that we're getting to install them.
And this is KSA designed?
No.
No, no, no.
MRB.
MRB.
Yeah.
What says the construction?
There are, there are Text Dot specifications and that's what they were put into. Encore has their own specifications and it has to do with the depth of the buried conduit and the conduit is not deep enough and so Encore would not accept the, uh, design and it was already installed over half of it. Now, some of it has been changed and is put in properly, but a good portion, more than half is, is not. And so, Encore, uh, we took it all the way to the top and they said they would not give a variance to their specification and would not put in, install or upkeep the, the lights.
Have we seen pictures of these cute lights?
I've never seen them, they're, they were like the old.
Yeah, we've had, we've had pictures in here before.
They look really great.
Yeah, you did.
That's right.
Before planning and zoning and actually set one up out here.
They look great. It looked dynamite.
The city of Rockdale has them.
We have the lights.
Is that what we ended up with?
They are cute.
So, who dropped the ball, Text Dot or the MR?
MRB designed it improperly.
Well, then.
Yep.
Their insurance pays this or?
Y'all have already authorized action against them, so we have the lawyers working on it.
On BBW?
And so, so what we did, we went to, um, KPA Engineering, who, uh, we've been using for a lot of, of our projects recently, and asked them to get us an estimate of the cost uh, to see whether we want to go out on, to bid or, uh, how we wanted to address it. And they sent it out to two of their better, um, electrical contractors and they came back both around a hundred and eighty-five thousand to do the installation. One of the two, um, contractors, RK Bass, is a, uh, TIPS, uh, buy board and that's a, that started by a school district in Texas and now it's nationwide, but it's, it's run through the, uh, state of Texas Authority and we got a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar finish price when they really dug in and found out what it was going to cost. And so, it's a solid hundred and ninety-two is what the cost is to put that in.
Is there, I looked at their, their quote, uh, they have no cons, no contingency, are we carrying a contingency? Um, of, of any, any kind? Because there's also a lot of exclusions in there, uh, they don't have any patching, I don't believe, if they have to cut.
If, no, if they, if they have to cut, uh, there were, there are some, uh, dollars in there for work they did, uh, but if it's not scheduled or it's in, uh, a street, uh, and again, I'm going off memory also, but there is some, uh, money in there for them to patch the concrete and things of that nature, um, where they do have to cut.
And, and I noticed there was a line item, um, in their proposal about uh, items outside of scope would be on time and material and there was a blank there for an X amount dollar rate per hour, but there was nothing in the proposal. Is that, is time and material covered on buy board?
Well, this is a, um, a solid quote that they, they have to stay by. It would have to be an approved, um, uh, item, additional item, alternative item that we ask them to do for there to be an increase in cost. So, they are, they would be held responsible for the installation as, as it was designed and we have a full, you know, plan set for that. Uh, we, we were going to put in two, uh, base stations or, or base units for the meters because we're going to have to pay the electricity. With Encore, we would not have it, it would just have been a flat monthly fee, but we're going to have to pay the electricity, so there'll be two meters, one on the west side and one on the east side. And then running the conduit, uh, from those base stations to the first nearest, um, connection box and then pulling it through the rest of them that's already there. They're also going to have to bore out, uh, because when they, the, the design that was put out by MRB did not have bases constructed in the plan, so they're going to have to bore out at each one of the locations of the, um, um, at each one of the lights and, um, build a base for it to sit on, so all that is included in the, in the quote.
I, I, the only thing I would like to see is, I happen to be in the construction business, I know how the change order world works.
Sure.
Um, two hours can become really expensive when there's something not, I would like to know what the hourly rate is
Okay.
when they encounter something that's not as, was presented to them, because it's going to happen.
Except the blank, except the blank.
Yeah, um, and then how, how many lights are we talking about?
Twelve.
And so, that is, uh, from where, where to where on the street?
Uh, the first one is, um, by the new, uh, or the.
The eighteen ninety-five?
I'm sorry, eighteen ninety.
Essentially Scarborough to Green.
Scarborough to Green and then, uh, from Green on the other side back. I don't think it goes all the way Scarborough, maybe, but may, Burleson, I think, on that side.
On Bell Street side?
There's six, there's six on each side of the highway through downtown. And I think you asked one time about this, were they going to take electrical lines down, well, when Encore, like, we will have Encore come in and take their current lights down. Those are all run individual lights, uh, lines, I looked at that the other day, they'll be taking those poles and lines down through there and everything there will be underground.
Well, um, hmm, every, there's still communication wires on some of those poles, aren't there?
I'm just saying, what, I don't, I didn't look like there were any communication wires between the light posts, but maybe there was. I, we'll have to check and see, I, I haven't got an answer.
Is, is that, are those twelve lights inclusive of everything that was supposed to be in the, because there are twelve in the plans and now we're getting twelve, and so that should take care of all the downtown streetlights?
We actually had a thirteenth to go over to try to light his mural, but he's got that taken care of now.
We have fourteen fixtures. Uh, there was, there, there was actually thirteen that we had in a drawing and we, uh, and then we were going to put, like she said, the, the fourteenth was going to be over by MDD. So, we have two other fixtures that we can u, utilize somewhere else.
Okay. Well, that would be the only thing I would like to see, if y'all want to make a motion that it includes, uh, some hourly rates for overages.
It won't be a problem, we can get that for you tomorrow probably.
I'll make a motion that we approve action item
Okay.
K as read and include a hourly rate for, um, instances that may come up.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Twelve L, we're about halfway through, folks. Consider taking any necessary action on replacing a two thousand and six John Deere backhoe.
Still yours.
Hey, where are you, where are you running off to?
Up through.
Time to go home.
The, uh, placement packet, uh, was done before, uh, the decision was made to go to the three-year payout on, uh, this instead of a five-year, and so this has the up-to-date numbers.
The, um, two thousand and six backhoe that we have, we took to, um, Flugerville to RDO equipment and they said that it had required repairs of over twenty-eight thousand dollars. As you can see, this year, the budget that was set up for earthmoving equipment and trucks for the public works department was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Because we've gone to E fleet and we've gone and we're, um, uh, buying, uh, two other pieces of equipment on, uh, a three to five-year contract. The total number of dollars that we have, um, targeted to spend is just under a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Uh, I can't give you the exact number because we're putting some lights in, um, back, uh, head, uh, head a cracks on two of our trucks and so it's going to cost me another five to six thousand dollars to get that, so, but we're around a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and which leaves the, um, thirty-five thousand dollars that will be unspent. Of course, those dollars are for the first year of these contracts and the, uh, continuing payment will have to be put into the budget for the coming year. But we don't, I don't, do not expect to have, uh, any capital, uh, equipment purchase request uh, for the coming year, where our trucks, I think we're good for at least two years and, uh, we have a mini excavator, a, a hydro excavator and then this backhoe should put us in good shape. Uh, the reason we're asking for this backhoe, it has an extended boom. Uh, currently, our backhoe's going on to go about ten and a half to twelve feet. We have a number of, uh, areas in town where our lines are fourteen to sixteen foot deep and this twenty twenty-four, uh, JCB backhoe will, uh, go eighteen foot two inches. So, this, we're recommending this, uh, as a replacement for the one that, uh, and then we'll put it, uh, in an auction when we, uh, sell some other equipment.
Will you repair it before you put it in auction or sell like it is?
Uh, I had them bring it back without being repaired.
And how many, how many backhoes do we have now, including this one?
We have two, one of them's in the shop and, um, basically, we have one for streets and one, two for water and wastewater. So.
The, uh, that, that would be my only, I, I, I'm all for this, uh, but I don't want to see the other one sitting around for any time, get it gone.
The most.
Just don't weed it around it. Any questions? Dave, you contemplating something over there?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we buy John Deere backhoe.
Nope, JCB.
JCB, item L. With the stipulation you sell that one quick.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Major.
Twelve M, consider taking any necessary action on a recommendation from the city manager regarding, regarding a request submitted by the Sesquicentennial Committee from the hotel occupancy tax for the Sesquicentennial Celebration video documentary, documentary during the events of July fourth to July twelfth, twenty twenty-four in Rockdale, Texas.
So, if you want to get it, uh, any kind of photographic or video evidence of what we've done for our hundred and fiftieth, we can do it. They originally said they would do it for seventy-two hundred and we said, that's a little pricey, let's take it down to sixty-four because we're going to take the first Friday coffee and then what we do when we re-bury the time capsule and couple some of those together, but it's essentially eight hundred dollars for, per event when they do something. So, if you want to have that done, it would be sixty-four hundred dollars.
And what do they produce to us? Do they produce just, uh, digital images or do they produce, uh, actual uh, video footage that they link to music, or what, what are they, what are they doing?
Music, so it's going to be the, the video and it'll be actual pictures and what we're hoping is that we can, or what we're expecting, is that we will also get that in the form that John Weed can use and we've got the time capsule now in my office and that it will go in there so that when, in twenty seventy-four, when the next one is opened, they can see what happened at the last one. And then it will also be something that we can put on the website and put pictures around and.
It's kind of cool.
About that time we'll be finishing this agenda.
I already feel frisky.
I'll make a motion that we approve action item M as read. Do I need the dollar amount in there, Barbara?
Sixty-four hundred.
So, for, um, the video, the hundred and fiftieth celebration and the amount of sixty-four hundred dollars.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Got a second, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. We have already conducted our executive session, so this meeting is adjourned.